Call this City Commission, special meeting of the City of Pahokee Tuesday, August 19, 2025, to order at 6:00 PM. They would please stand for their invitation provided by Commissioner McPherson Senior, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, heavenly and most gracious, Father, let me just thank you for another opportunity to come into your presence. Father, we ask that you just saturate our minds and our hearts, Father, other than we will work together in unity, Father. But most of all, Father, that we ask that you just bless this city and these citizens, Father, and the City of Pahokee. Father, we ask that you just touch each and every commissioner, our city manager, and our attorney, Father, that you would endow us with wisdom, Father, to move your city forward. Father, we just be so careful to give you all the praises, in Jesus mighty name, amen.
Amen. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and most importantly, thank our audience and our residents for being here today to participate in this special call meeting of the City of Pahokee City Commission. The topic of the meeting is the presentation. We will be appointing a new city commissioner to complete the term of the retired and resigned City Commissioner Derek Holden. This term will be up on March 2027. So this person will serve approximately a year and a half, and then we will have an election, a regular election, to select and appoint a person to fill the remaining one year term, so as long as everyone is understanding of the process and how we would go about doing it. At this time, we will have a presentation, and I'll have our city manager introduce or the clerk, whichever had been assigned to do it, the way we would order the presentation, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Commission, community. As referenced a minute ago, tonight's special meeting is centered around filling a vacant seat, current vacancy that's on the commission today. And we have an agenda here that calls for five to seven minutes per person. Last week, a week and a half ago, the commission agreed upon a process that we utilize for tonight's meeting. It included an opportunity for those residents that had an interest in applying to fill the vacancy, an opportunity to respond by providing a letter of interest and some additional information to the clerk, which was done. That time period lasted until the 13th of the month, which was last week. And today's meeting was identified previously as the meeting that will honor and fill the vacancy. We had a total of three respondents by the deadline of the 13th. And the way that it was advertised, it was advertised and presented in a way that the order that we're going to go by tonight is the alphabetical spelling of the person's last name. So the first presenter will be...
Mr. Jackson, I'm very sorry, before we get to that point, let's get the approver of the agenda as it is presented. City Commission, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is being presented.
Mayor Bab, I don't believe, I'm sorry, I don't believe the approval of the agenda for tonight is necessary.
It's a special meeting, it's just like a regular meeting?
Yes.
There's a, for special meetings, you would go in the order of the agenda as you see it here, however you all print it, printed it, and you can only limit your conversation to the items that are on the specific agenda.
Okay. And what about the order that the agenda presented?
If you chose to change the order, you could change the order, but you can't change the topics on the agenda.
No, I wasn't playing out, I was just approving the agenda as presented, that's what I was calling it.
But it's not, it's not necessary.
Okay, not necessary, okay. I will also move that we change the order of the agenda, and I would like to see us have the public comments on the agenda items only first, to let a public some input on this process. Thank you.
You would need a motion, a second for that?
Yes, I know. Are there a motion, a second there? During, now, the second, we'll move for the agenda to be presented as presented.
Okay. With that being said, Mayor, the first presentation in terms of alphabetized listing of the last name will be provided by Mr. Jacob Jake Finkel. And Mr. Finkel, as the others, will have five to seven minutes to present.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jacob, but I go by Jack Finkel. I've been a resident here, this month will be five years. I'm kind of an outsider trying to get in, and ever since I've been here, I've been trying to promote, or teach my knowledge, being in the construction industry for 30 years, to the local residents, and nobody wants to participate. I don't understand it, you know, I want to better this town, from what I understand, this place used to be an awesome place to visit. I would love to see it grow again, and I will do whatever I can to make that happen. I was in business, in the construction industry, for almost 30 years. I've pretty much done everything you could possibly imagine, made connections, bring good ideas to different organizations. I try to take, try not to take no for an answer when somebody tells me I can't do something, I get it accomplished. I was actually a specialist in my field when I did that. I had some people that just came to me because they couldn't solve a problem. I think outside the box, like I said, I bring a lot of new deals to the table, let me see, what else? I made some notes, sorry, guys. I pretty much want to get the community involved and working together to grow this town. For five years, and I don't mean to insult anybody, but for five years, I've seen nothing happen in this town, no matter how much I try to make something happen to help individuals that need it, nobody wants to. Maybe I'm going about it all wrong, but I believe that if I had the opportunity to share my ideas and my beliefs and my stick-to-it-iveness to this commission, I think it'll be a plus. I'm probably the least qualified and the most qualified to sit there. I've never done anything political in my entire life, this would be all new to me. I love a challenge, and if you allow me to do that, I will listen to anybody that has anything to say and do my best to make things come to fruition. And I also agree with Mayor Bab that people should comment before you guys make a decision because it's the community that will suffer or reap the benefits of whatever happens in here. I'm looking to really grow this town to what it was, what it could be, and it could be great. And, you know, as Mr. Jackson knows, I've been trying to do something with the restaurant and the marina just to get people jobs and whatnot, and nobody wants to. So if I had the opportunity to be up there, maybe I could convince people to get together and work as a community, and show up and participate, and have like little events just for the kids or for whatever. I, you probably have them because I really haven't paid much attention to it, like I said, I was never political, and that's my story, I'm sticking to it, and I do think that you should listen to the people before you make a decision, and that's just how I feel, and if I can help the city, whether I'm selected or not, I'm all in. Thank you for listening.
My next presenter is Mrs. Isabel J. McDonald. Ms. McDonald, you have five to seven minutes to present.
Good evening to everyone on the dais.
Good evening.
Those of you in the audience as well. The comments that I have come from within because I was not born here, but I grew up here, and all of my children were born and reared here. And I just have a really, really big heart for our city and for our community. I could have moved away a long time ago and never looked back, but I chose to stay. My desire is to, as Mr. Finkel referenced, is to bring back the flourishing town that we had long ago. And I know that that's not something that I can do as an individual, it would take buy-in from everyone here, whether they are in a position to make a market contribution or whether or not they live within the city limits, as long as they are part of Pahokee, which we know some of it extends beyond the city limits. I do believe that that's something that we can make happen. I'm a very civic-minded person, I want to see a lot of things happen here, and again, I know that it's not something that I can do all by myself, but I'm going to do my level best to bring a fresh eye and a fresh idea and make sure that we are taking advantage of those opportunities that can benefit not just one of us, but all of us. I certainly want to be able to see our kids that are here growing up right now, be afforded the opportunities that are available to children in other communities. Some of the things that we need to do are not anything that's been reinvented, we just need to make sure that they're done, and we need to have some accountability in every aspect of what goes on here in this city governance. And one of the things that I am known for doing is making sure that I speak up and not act as if someone that's dead, because the Bible says that if you sit there and allow something to go on and you don't speak out against it, you're worse than that person that's dead, because they cannot speak out. And I'm not saying that I'm some big bad monster or anything like that, but I'm coming to handle my business, and I'm going to make sure that everyone that's within my circle is on the same page as I am. If you're not there, I'm not the one to put you down, but I'm going to do my best to help you get there. If we are open to things that need to be done, then we can certainly all work together and make sure that it happens. No one of us is any better than the other, because the Bible again says that God has no respect to persons. So whatever it is that we can each do for each other, we just need to make sure that we're open to doing it. It's only going to benefit all of us. I'm not here to look down on anybody and to try to toot my horn and make myself feel like I'm better than anybody, but I know what I bring to the table. I'm here to take advantage of this opportunity and to make sure that we are all on the same page, because I'm not one of those people that hold grudges, you can be mad if you want to, but we're going to handle the business. What I see, what I see that's going on is some growth that's needed, and what we all need to do as individuals, whether we're sitting up here or whether we're sitting out here, is take, take the necessary steps, make the necessary adjustments, and do what we all can do to make sure that this city is moving forward. That's what I'm about, and I encourage all of you to join me in that effort, and let's do what needs to be done for Pahokee. I thank you all for giving me this opportunity to have these words. Again, I welcome any input from anyone, whether I'm up here or not. I, like I said, have grown up here, I love Pahokee, and I'm going to do my part. So come on, let's get it done.
And now we'll hear from the last candidate that submitted eligibility-wise is Ms. Clara Mervin.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
My name is Clara Mervin, and I stand before you today with a sincere heart and a proven record of service to ask of your consideration in filling this vacant commission seat. For more than nine years, I have had the honor of serving this community as a city commissioner, and for six of those years as Vice Mayor. During that time, I have worked closely with the city staff, community leaders, and residents to strengthen our city and to ensure that voices of Pahokee was heard, not only at home, but at the county level, the state level, and at the national levels. I bring to this seat not only experience, but also relationships. Over the years, I have built connections with elected officials, agencies, directors, organizations at every level of government. These relationships matter because they help open doors for grants, resources, and opportunity that Pahokee cannot afford to miss. Recently, I was appointed at the Palm Beach County Glaze Regional Representative for Health and Human Services, and I have proudly represented our community with the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials as well. These roles have given me a broader platform to advocate for the needs of Pahokee and the Glaze. I'm also known, I know the laws and the charter of our city. I understand the responsibilities and the limits of the commission, and I know how to work in partnership with the city manager and staff to get things done. My years of service have given me the knowledge and the wisdom needed to address issues like economic development, housing, beautification, school safety, and community engagement. Most important, I love this city. I'm born and raised here, moved away and came back about 11 years ago. Pahokee is my home, and I have never stopped working to see it thrive. Even when I wasn't on this dais, I continue serving, whether through church, through county boards, or through grassroots community efforts. This is not just about holding a seat, it's about serving people and making decisions that will uplift families, support businesses, and give our youth a future they can believe in. As you consider this appointment, I ask you to weigh not only what's on paper, but also what's in the heart. I have the experience, the proven dedication, and the vision to step into this role immediately without delay or learning curve. The City of Pahokee deserves stability, wisdom, and leadership that is ready on day one. I humbly ask that you select me to fill this vacancy to once again serve the people of our great city. Together, we can continue the work of building a stronger and brighter and more united Pahokee. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we would entertain resolution, Resolution 2025-49, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, appointing a city commissioner to fill a vacancy pursuant to Article 2, Section 2.07D of the City of Pahokee's Charter, providing for adoption of representations, providing for appointment of commissioner, providing for term, providing for oath, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of Resolution 2025-49?
Yes, sir. This resolution will be considered by the commission tonight, and effectively, once a selection is made to fill the vacancy, we'll ratify that process and name a new city commissioner to fill the vacancy until the term expires of 2027.
Until the next, um, election.
Until the next regular election.
Thank you, City Attorney, for your reading this resolution into the minutes. Thank you, City Manager, for your explanation of the resolution. City Commission, having had Resolution 2025-49 properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, you will at this time consider this resolution, and we would include the name of the individual that we have selected and will be appointing the new city commission. Prior to this, we need to entertain a motion for your choices, and we will begin by stating for the record who would be your choice for appointment. Once we receive the choices from each of the commission, then we will determine the appointment based on the majority of the commission choosing. And I'll start basically with Commissioner Scott.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible that we can, like the order that they came in, that we can, I guess, just pose each one, and then we can vote on each one, or that's not something we can do?
I don't understand what you're...
Okay, like Mr. Fennel went first, so as we went in alphabetical order, if we can go the same way, and so...
Same way, way.
In alphabetical order in which they went each name, and then as each name come up, since he was the first, then we vote in the order in which they were, which they came up and spoke. Can that be done?
I'm not even sure I have that presence.
Can that be done?
I don't understand what you're...
Okay, like Mr. Fennel comes up, okay? If we pose the question, someone, you know, Mr. Fennel came up first, I move that Mr. Fennel be appointed, and each person come up, we either vote him up or vote him down, each person?
Let's just take, let's just do, let's just vote.
Okay.
We're going to ask again, Mr. Scott, we'll come around this way to my...
All right, I recommend we select Isabel J. McDonald.
Vice Mayor Williams.
I recommend that we appoint Isabel McDonald.
I, as the mayor, would recommend that we appoint our previous commissioner Clara Mervin based on experience and so forth. Commissioner McPherson.
I recommend Isabel McDonald.
There have been three recommendations for Isabel McDonald. I'll entertain a motion to have Mrs. McDonald appointed if that's a choice of this commission. I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I make a motion that we sway Isabel McDonald as the commission.
I'll second her.
It has been moved by Commissioner Scott and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Williams that we appoint Isabel McDonald, our new city commissioner, until the next election, election, which would be done March 2027. Call for questions. Hearing, hon, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
The resolution has been read into the record, and so you're voting on the resolution at this point, and to insert this name within the resolution, just for clarity.
Yes. Vice Mayor Cowan Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
And Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote to appoint our newly selected city commissioner, Ms. Elizabeth McDonald.
Isabel.
Isabel McDonald. Next, we'll have the swearing ceremony of our newly appointed city commissioner. We'll ask Ms. Elizabeth McDonald to...
Elizabeth. Isabel.
Isabel.
It's called a bill.
You may come up.
I'll be conducting your swearing, you can come over here. Please raise your right, yes, you can come over here. I, state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government of the United States of America...
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
...and the state of Florida...
And the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
...to hold office...
To hold office.
...under the Constitution of this state...
Under the Constitution of this state.
...and charter of the City of Pahokee...
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
...that I will well...
That I will well...
...and faithfully perform...
And faithfully perform.
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of city commissioner...
Of city commissioner.
...with the City of Pahokee...
With the City of Pahokee.
...on which I am now about to enter...
On which I'm now about to enter.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. After the meeting, I'll have you to sign it, okay? After the meeting, I'll have you to sign it, okay? Do you have your family with you?
City Commissioner, we're going to go down and have our picture taken with our new commissioner. Then we'll have her come up and join us on the podium. At this time, City Clerk, do we have any public comments cards completed?
Yes, sir. We have a total of... Yes, sir. A total of three. The first person is Ms. Lolita Kimes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lolita Kimes Sobers, AKA Scratch Scratch. I make it happen in this city. I'm quite sure everybody know me. What I want to get up here and say is, I think everyone made the right choice because I feel like we need someone up here that care about our city, that want to make our city move forward. And I'm not going to keep it short. You did it, Ms. McDonald, and I love it. Y'all have a great day.
The next person is Robert Love.
Get ready for it. Get ready. Good evening, everybody. I tell you all, that table is something else. I remember Keith said, "If it wasn't for the table, we wouldn't have did it," when it was him, Bolden, and Ms. Mervin. We shook the bushes and did everything to get you up there. By the time you got up there, you turned your back. And I told you in one of the meetings, I said, "You're going to have egg on your face." Now I'm saying it's Christmas in August. You see, I got my Santa Claus hat on because I know this is going to happen. Because like I told you, I was praying for your foot, and you walking good. We praying for Ms. McDonald, and she sitting up there now. But just like I want to say about Ms. Mervin, I told her when she said, "Oh, we beating a dead horse." The dead horse done got up now, and he sitting up there. That's what you have to look at, people, praying and not worrying. We said it time and time again. Every time I look at the OIG, that OIG report where it say y'all was taking money, $3.1 million. She say she did all this good job, and y'all don't know where that money at. That wasn't no good job. Because if y'all did a good job, y'all have no way them $3.1 million that the OIG say that somebody done got. I don't know how y'all missed that. You was the mayor, and she was the vice mayor. She got up here, and she made a good speech, but she left out all of that. She left out all of that. Y'all been saying, I've been saying this, I don't know how long. And I ain't going to get through saying it. Because like I still say tonight, when it's all said and done, oh, I don't care how much I've been working on a good, doing a job. If I wasn't there when all the money got missing, if I was there when all the money got missing, don't nobody want me there no more. And then you set up there, Keith, and then y'all been running around with these little flag, I mean, on Facebook talking about who got the experience. When y'all got y'all butt up there, y'all didn't have no experience. So start with the experience thing when y'all be talking about what's going on in Pahokee because there ain't nothing going on in Pahokee since y'all been in there because seem like y'all been doing what y'all want to do. And I kept telling you, Keith, if y'all keep doing what y'all want to do, you going to be next. You next. Ain't no if, ands, or buts about it. Everybody what was up there when I was raising all the hell what y'all can say, when y'all say everybody was watching, now y'all watching. You the only one left. You the only one left. Tell me, am I right? Am I right? You the only one left. I done got every one of y'all what was sitting there, butt up there talking about, "He need to hush. He need to sit down." They ain't stopped yet, and they ain't going to stop. Because one thing I can say about Ms. McDonald, I ran and got her. There ain't nobody... Then I ran to get you, Ms. McDonald. I say, "Please, Ms. McDonald, please. We ain't got nobody. If I don't get you, we ain't going to have nobody." So don't y'all be wondering how she got here. The table is something. The table is a move. If y'all don't believe the table a move, go see and watch them 240,000 views what we get. Go watch all of that. This is not a joke what I'm doing. And like I still tell people, I promise to the Lord and all His angels, I was going to do more for my community than what I did when I was selling drugs. And I know I'm doing more right now.
Are there any additional cards?
The last comment is from Ms. Sheila Williams.
Mr. Love?
Hello, everyone. My name is Sheila Williams. I live at 271 Booker Place, which is my family home for sixty-two years. I want to thank Mr. Jackson for taking care of that tree for me. And the city been doing a decent job keeping that lot beside me, keeping the grass and the weeds cut. My only concern I have today is there's a big hole at the end of the street on Booker Place, and I have to pass it every day when I get in my car. If you hit that hole, you'll tear your whole car. And congratulations, Ms. McDonald.
Are there any additional comments cards?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. City Commission, having all entertained all business that have been brought before us on this agenda, entertain a motion for the adjournment of this meeting.
Mayor Bab, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Fearsom Senior. Call for questions. Hearing none. Ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 6:39 PM.